Andy, you're muted.
Alderwoman O'Neil. Alderwoman Tice.
Here.
Alderman Plofka.
Here.
Alderman Sims.
Here.
And Alderman Waggie.
Here, here.
Present.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval or amendment of agenda. Do we have any changes to the, to the agenda? Any objection to approving by acclamation? Seeing none, it will be so approved. Next on the agenda is item four proclamation, Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Alderman Lockmuir, I think you're ready.
Yep.
All right.
This is a proclamation recognizing the 51st Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, which is this week, May 3rd through May 9th, 2020. It reads, whereas the office of professional municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office and professional municipal clerks provide the professional link between citizens, local government bodies, agencies of government at other levels, and whereas the professional municipal clerk has pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as an informational sent information center on the functions of local government and community, and whereas the professional municipal clerks continues to strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of professional municipal clerks through participating in educational programs, seminars, workshops, annual meetings of their state professional county and international professional organizations, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of professional municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, David A. Dimmitt, Mayor of the City of Brentwood, Missouri, proclaim the week of May 3rd through May 9th, 2020 as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation of our municipal clerks and to all professional municipal clerks for their vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. I witness their wherefore, I have here unto set my hand to cause the seal of the City of Brentwood, Missouri, to be affixed this fourth day of May, 2020. David A. Dimmitt, Mayor.
Thank you. And I, I think that's now more than ever, I, I think we all should have tremendous appreciation for the, the clerks in general and Shelley in particular. This has been a very difficult time, not just this pandemic, but going all the way back to when City Hall was closed for the renovation. This has been very difficult and she has done a fantastic job. So, thank you, Shelley. Next on the agenda is public hearing. We have none citizen comments? We have no citizen comments, is that correct, Shelley? All right. Next up, mayor and alderman reports. I have just a few things. First of all, we have a municipal election coming up in less than a month, so I would expect to start seeing some yard signs popping back up. And I, the, the election is June the 2nd, 2020. The next item that I have is, I'm, I'm happy to report that our police department is going to be going back to its, its normal duties. They had taken special precautions sometime in, in March, I believe it was, to, to ensure the safety of, of a number of our officers and to essentially hold them in reserve if needed. And it's my understanding that just Bola and Chief Spees have discussed and Chief has suggested it's time we to go back, so we are going to be doing that. And then finally, I'm happy to announce that the city is going to be participating in a food drive. And this is a joint countywide food collection event this coming May 9th, and it will be from the hours nine to three at our fire department. The recipient of all this food is going to be the St. Louis Area Food Bank. The St. Louis Area Food Bank is the region's largest nonprofit food distributor. They partner with more than 500 organizations and pantries to feed almost 400,000 people in their 26 county service territory, including St. Louis County. With recent strains from COVID-19, the food bank has seen an increase in need to buy up to 30%. Food collected from this drive will help alleviate food insecurity by providing local pantries with a variety of food to meet their community's needs. All shelf-stable food and personal care items are welcome. Unfortunately, we didn't get a whole lot of warning on this. This was an email, I believe, that we received, maybe from the mayor of Clayton, I don't recall exactly, but it found its way, it's my understanding, into one of those junk folders and we discovered it. And so we decided to go ahead and participate in this. We want to get the word out as fast as we can, since it's this coming Saturday, so I would encourage all of you, as well as anybody watching, when you go to one of our four wonderful grocery stores or Target or any of our other retailers that sell food and personal items, please spend a few extra dollars and to help out this drive. As I tell my kids, no matter where you are, there's always somebody who has it worse off than you do. And this is a very difficult time. I appreciate that, we all understand that, and we all might be having our own issues and troubles, but I can, I can assure you that there are a lot of people who are worse off than all of us. So I hope that when you go to the grocery store, when you go to the stores this week, that you do spend that extra money to help out this, this terrific organization. And the other nice thing is that since it's going to be held at the, at the fire department, I can also guarantee you that it's going to be very safe. The fire department is very particular about who they let in and who they don't. And I can assure you it will be safe and they will be observing all recommendations, including social distancing and so it'll be perfectly safe to, to participate in that. And I would, I would encourage you again to do that. And that is it for the mayor's report. Oh, I'm sorry, I do have one other thing, I, I forgot. I believe it was Chubb Insurance, isn't it, Bola? You can just nod your head if it was Chubb Insurance. Yeah, Chubb Insurance dropped off some gift cards, $250 worth of gift cards in $25 increments. And so we have decided to go ahead and as a show of, of respect for what we call our frontline personnel, those three departments that have been dealing with this since mid-March, that'd be our police, fire and sanitation to distribute those cards amongst those three departments. So we want to thank Chubb Insurance for that, for that generosity. And that is it for the mayor's report. Next, we have Alderwoman Ebeling, do you have anything?
I don't have any report.
Alderman Leahy.
Thank you, Your Honor. Would you like to address this issue now, or would you like to postpone it and put it as a later item on the agenda?
What item?
This is the food drive that I was pulling together for the election day.
I.
It's posted, it's posted under this part. All right. You all received an email from me late last night for a program that I'm pulling together to do a food drive at the four Brentwood polling places for the June 2nd election. I've received three different responses from aldermen. I've received a response from the Brentwood Pulse, who has extended to me a courtesy of allowing me to rewrite the article that I think was attached to your invites, because I get the sense that some of you are not happy that I'm trying to pull this off. I was not aware of your May 9th food drive. In Nancy's email to me this morning, Nancy, I was not aware that the Brentwood School District was doing a food drive to work with, and I have talked with them three times now. And today I played phone tag with Mr. Hopstinker, so he and I are trying to connect faces. Basically, what is going on, or at least what's been happening, and I'll let you all comment afterwards. Back on the 26th of April, I think Kathy, you asked why there was no discussion or anything on this issue with the Board of Aldermen, because the last meeting we had, it still wasn't even an idea in my head. On the 26th, I sent an email to the mayor and to Bola saying I'd be looking at wanting to do this, is there any problem with doing so? I sent the same email to the St. Louis County Election Board Directors, Mr. Frye and Mr. Stick, and received a response back that they did not have a problem with us doing it, but they would ask that their people, those working the election section, not be involved in it, and that we would do a courtesy and make sure that anything we do is at least 25 feet from the front door. From there, I reached out to work through with the polling places to see if they would have any objections to it. And we started looking as to if we did a food drive, the question is, what do you collect and who gets it? I did check with the St. Louis Area Food Pantries with the group that's doing with the firehouse. What I did learn, and I've had the suspicion from earlier with all of the food drives we've done with the Boy Scouts of America, is that they will take whatever we bring in, but because their pantry serves so many and so vast, they reserve the right to distribute the food to the pantries in greatest need or in the, how would you say it, lowest shelf material, so that they can keep them all up and functional. I was hoping to run a drive to service the Brentwood community. So I reached out to the McKnight Crossing Group. If you go on their website, they have the Christians Who Care Organization who service and help families in their community. And I also reached out to St. Mary Magdalene. We have the Care Group and the St. Vincent de Paul Group that they service here in this area. We worked through what they would accept and what they wouldn't accept and got some listings, and that's how I created the list of things that I was looking forward to collect. From there, we worked with the Boy Scouts, because when you collect all the food, I needed some way of collecting boxes and stuff so that they could get boxed up and distributed to work with. The Boy Scouts are able to let me have 200 boxes from their scouting for food arrangements. I'm now down to the logistics of, if we're going to do this, how do I get my helpers? I opened it up to you all and to all those on the Brentwood, Brentwood ballot, because I figured it would be a great thing for all of us to put helping the community ahead of the importance of getting re-elected to work with. That's my motivation and that's what I was working with. I apologize for the very late notice Sunday night, but I was still chasing things down on Friday to confirm the logistics and stuff to see if it was really doable. From there, I received an email from Kathy, and I got one this morning from Nancy that raised some issues, and I'm ready to discuss those if you all would like to do so. What I am asking or offering, as the email said, it's an invitation to you all, if you would like to participate, and we'd be manning the polls anyway, I figured being there and greeting people would work. The biggest logistics was the safety factor. You can't do something of this nature and bring everybody, we don't have the isolationist of the firehouse to work with. So when we do it with the scouts, I have anywhere from 20 to 40 people in the bays at the firehouse helping the scouting for food program. If we broke it into smaller locations of polling places and you offered it to the residents that would come, they can easily just hand you a bag or put it in a bin and go in and vote. Your extent of your connection with them is to tell them thank you to work with. From there, it's the logistics of getting it boxed up and transported to the three groups that would help distribute that which is collected. Because we've never done anything like this as this group, I have really no basis for a measurement of success or what volume to consider. So the best I could do is go back and look at prior histories of voting, looking at the numbers and turnouts, and estimating that maybe a third of all of those that would come vote might bring you something. So I'm anywhere from 25 boxes for the entire four groups to maybe up to 200 boxes of food, with a box containing about 35 cans. So that's where I'm at. Open for any questions that you all would like to have, the invitation is out there for you all to participate.
Alderman Leahy, I, I just, I want to say, yeah, Aldermanic Reports is my, my understanding is simply an opportunity for the mayor and the aldermen to report things that are going on. It's not an opportunity to have some type of a, a discussion with, with the board. There's, this item is not on the agenda anywhere, and if you want to talk to somebody about that, I, I don't have any.
Point of order, Your Honor?
Yes.
If you'll take a look at the agenda under this report, you have this item listed by the city administrator, and that's why I started the conversation with, is this the time to talk about?
Where, I, I don't.
Look under your, your board docs and look under the Aldermanic Report.
Right.
And if you see under my name, there is an attachment there that gives you the invitation that you all received.
Your Honor. Hold on. I understand that. That's not my point. My point is, it's an opportunity for you to make an announcement. You've done that. If you want to have a discussion with board members, now is not the time to do that. The time to do that is outside of the meeting. Pick up the phone, give them a call, talk to them if you want to get their help, but we're not going to do this during an Aldermanic Report. Now, do you have anything else that you have for your, for your report?
Forgive me, Your Honor, I was under a different impression based on my earlier discussions this afternoon. Forgive me for taking up your time.
No, you're not taking up my time. You're not taking, I just want to make sure you understand, we're not going to have a discussion right now, because that's not what this is, that's not the purpose of the alderman reports. Alderman Lockmuir.
Move on.
Alderwoman O'Neil. I think that was a no report.
Fair, I do. I'm sorry, I had. Just want to say the library, of course, is working from home, but with the eBooks, they've done some statistics, they have a 50% increase in the use of eBooks under two different venues. One is Overdrive, which is a collection chosen by the library staff, so some very pertinent and some popular things. The other is Hoopla, which you get on demand and the library pays the fee for each book. So either one works, you just need a library card to do it, and it's great to see that so many people are taking advantage of it.
That is fantastic. Yep. Alderman Plofka.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any report. I think Nancy and I have talked in the time leading up to this meeting about whether or not we're going to try and schedule on a virtual basis, Award One meeting. And Nancy, collectively, I think we're just gonna, we're kind of in a wait and see mode here, but we're, but if we do do one, we will try to get the word out as best we can on Nextdoor and, and trying to use the, the calendar from the City of Brentwood and to develop a Zoom address for the meeting. I'm assuming that's what we're going to do. Does that make sense to you?
Mayor, may I chime in on Alderman Plofka's report? Yes, Ward Two is going to have a meeting, and so we're going to see how theirs goes and, and see if, we'll let them be the guinea pig board, and then we will look at doing something later in May, assuming that their meeting is successful.
Beyond that, Your Honor, I have no report.
Okay, thank you. Alderwoman Sims.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Thursday, May 7th Ways and Means Meeting is going to be postponed to be reset at a later date. Some of the key people that we were hoping to have at the meeting don't have the information that we need in order to discuss topics. And I will defer to my esteemed co-alderman of Ward Two to highlight our very exciting upcoming virtual meeting for Ward Two. But that's all for my report.
Thank you. Alderwoman Tice, do you have anything else?
No, I don't, thank you.
Okay. Alderman Waggie.
Yeah, as, as Sunny mentioned, since we're so good at the Zoom stuff, we're going to have a virtual ward meeting. You know, it's going to be, it's kind of the moonshot for Ward Two, but we are the innovators, we are the technically most advanced of that. So that's May 12th, 7:00 PM. We put it out on social media. Speaking of Zoom, I just got an email from a constituent saying they were not able to get into the Zoom meeting, so I don't know if it was a new invite, it wasn't updated. So I sent them the connection information, but just for awareness. And then one quick question, the electronics drive is still scheduled for May 9th, is my understanding, so we have some kind of social distancing in place for that, but that is still continuing on on May 9th, is my understanding.
Is that correct, Bola? You're, you're muted.
Yes, it is still on.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up, Alderman Waggie. As a result of cleaning my garage, I have a lot of electronics that I need to dispose of. Looking forward to that.
Yeah, we socialize that pretty hard since we have a short amount of time as well, so it's a two-stop shop, food drive and electronics.
There we go. Okay, next on the agenda is item eight, city administrator report. We have three items, the first is the Brentwood Bound update. Bola, is Craig handling this?
Yes, he is.
Okay, Craig Schluter.
Good evening, Craig Schluter with Navigator Building Solutions. I'll be providing the city administrator report for Brentwood Bound. So starting with project updates, as I reported before, the demo bid package two is out to bid, bids are due this Thursday. Next, as I reported before, Jacobs and Planning Design Studio will be presenting the Norm West Park 30% progress drawings and the Phase Two Master Park Plan on May 18th, so the next meeting. Also on that same meeting, we are targeting to bring an MSD agreement. We were hoping to bring it tonight, but there were a few more comments had to go back and forth. We are pushing to have that to you all on May 18th, then that will allow me to do a budget update to the board on June 1st. Getting into the typical update, there were no construction costs spent since the last Board of Aldermen meeting. In regards to soft costs, there were nu, there were numerous soft costs, including legal fees, legal consultants, flood mitigation in Deer Creek Greenway Connector Design and Engineering, project management fees, environmental surveys, property appraisals and, and property surveys. Total spend since the last Board of Aldermen meeting was $278,897.51. Next, property acquisitions. There were property acquisitions, property relocation and property re-establishment expenses. Total spend since the last Board of Aldermen meeting was $122,227.94. And lastly, as discussed in closed session last Board of Aldermen meeting, there were some additional property acquisition expenses that raised the committed contingency to And it's the update.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions for, for Craig? Yes, Alderwoman O'Neil.
Thank you. On the May 18th meeting, is the drawing that will be presented a final drawing, or is it a proposal where there may be options?
30%. Yeah, so these, so there's two different things. There's the Phase Two Master Plan, so that is really a conceptual stage drawing. So they're just presenting the recommendation, but it is at its infancy for comments. The next is the, the Norm West Park, that's at 30%. So that is also very incomplete, it's 70% incomplete. And so, yeah, they want to present that. There, there should be no surprises on the Norm West Plan, it's what you guys have seen before, it's just 30% more complete than the master plan you saw. So, but yeah, we, we're presenting it to you all and we're asking for any comments.
Thank you.
Shelley. I see that we, have we lost Alderman, let's see, Lockmuir and Leahy?
I can tell you, Alderman Leahy's is turned off. Alderman Lockmuir, I don't see him any longer.
Oh, here he comes.
He's off, I'm sorry, he's, I think he's here is. There he is.
Oh, we lost him.
I had to shovel more coal into my modem.
Okay.
I do not see Alderman Leahy any longer.
Okay. I wonder if we've lost him? And. All right. Does somebody want to try and track him down, or should we continue? What do you, what do you think, Bola? I'm looking for your input here.
Dan is helping us out.
Okay.
He's on his way back in.
You're welcome to use the computer here at the podium.
Turn on the camera. You can take it.
Know that you're powered on. Thank you. We want to plug it in here. There we go. Forgive me.
All right.
Computer.
Good to see you again, Alderman Leahy.
I haven't changed.
All right, okay. Any other questions for Craig on the Brentwood Bound? All right, let's move on. I think Bola, have you, you want to, next on the agenda is the COVID-19 Revenue and Expenditure Project projections, but do you want to take the, the item 8C first?
Correct.
Okay. Notice business license payment, second mail notice, who's handling that?
So Lisa, ordinarily, the ordinance number 4919 gives the city administrator the ability to act in emergency situations, but felt that we needed to bring this to the board and have a discussion, because the code is somewhat silent on some of the items that we're also looking to do. So you will notice in the document that we sent you, we say there are 80-plus businesses who are yet to pay their business license. And while we're processing this, reminding them to pay, we're also receiving requests from those who are asking the city to waive the late fee. So in the Brentwood Municipal Code, we researched this and it is silent on that. So we would like the board to weigh in on that, and then the ability to ask for an extension so that this gives everybody due time to be able to make their payment. Lisa, is there anything you want to add as background?
Oh, okay. All right. What I guess I could add to this is just to give you a little bit of background, on an average, the City of Brentwood has approximately 650 businesses. So those that have obtained their 2020 business license, there are 464 active licensed, and as the city administrator had stated, there's approximately 80 that are renewing, which means that they started the process, but they haven't paid. But we also have about 80 businesses that have not begun to renew for their license either. So we have approximately about 160 businesses that still would need to apply and pay this year. As the city administrator said, we're just starting to get some requests now for people who would like to not pay the delinquency, and the delinquency per our code is we charge if we do not receive payment after the February 15th date, which is a which is established by code, then there is a 10% delinquency of their fee amount that's added to that. So I guess to balance this out though a little bit, we had other businesses that had not also paid by the February 15th date. Approximately 50 had paid after February 15th, but did pay the 10% delinquency. So I can answer any questions, but otherwise I just wanted to give you a little bit of background and some general statistics.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Plavka.
Thanks. Lisa, can you tell us in an average year, it looks like you've got 77% of the businesses have paid either on time or within that, or have paid that additional on a late fee basis, 77%. So of that 77, you know, to 13 or 20... 23%, thank you. How does that compare to an average year? Is, do we, how many are we typically having to chase beyond the, you know, the month date?
Sure. So our department, planning and development, started the business license program because we're using MyGov now and it's an online system. So I have two years of information that really I could probably rely on. But in terms of the other two years that Conthire Department has been working with the business license program, this is always about average. It's very close to the other two years. So we always have maybe 60, 70% that pay, get everything turned in on time. Then we have some that had paid the late fee last year. And then again, we, I would say we can easily go until almost July till some of these businesses will, will make their payment and get their active license for the current calendar year.
And these, and these, the license themselves was due by January 30th?
I'm sorry, so the license is good for the calendar year, January 1st to December 31st. But the payment for the business license is due by February 15th of that calendar year. They initially get a notice, since again, we're doing this with MyGov and it's online. The first email notice that it was time to renew would have been sent, I want to say it was either December 18th or 19th of last year.
Okay, so with that in mind, Mr. Mayor, I mean, if we're being asked to weigh in on the notion of whether or not we should forgive these 150 or so businesses, I'd be against it from a couple of different standpoints. One is the fee was owed prior to the pandemic, to really anything closing down by a full month. In addition, the amount of late businesses doesn't, isn't really varied from the last two years, at least from the information we've got. And last but not least, there's 50 or so businesses that have already paid the late fee because they filed late and I don't know that it's, it does a bit of a disservice to them to excuse it for the balance of the ones that still have not paid. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? Alderman Layhe.
I will agree with Mr. Plavka. Three years ago, we came to the board and asked on a business in the industrial court that came in on the 16th of February. They didn't write their check on time and the guy apologized because he was out of town and didn't have his checkbook to send it to us. He asked, the board agreed that even a day late, he had enough time. I think it's a disservice to all the businesses that did do it correctly and followed the code to keep their license up and current. And to give them a granted extension is not in the best interest for all your businesses.
A question for Lisa, has any of these businesses contacted you personally to say they've been affected in the last month or so and can't pay?
I have not taken a call like that, other than they just asked if it would be waived. We have a permit technician, though, who really runs or administers the program. So I'm not sure if out of the five calls or so that we've received, if they've related it back to COVID. I would not know that information.
Okay, thank you. We have received one business owner who is requesting that we waive the late fee. They are claiming that there was miscommunication between the city and them, and that would be the basis for waiving the late fee.
Does, does the, does the code permit, doesn't, so the code is silent, so it doesn't prevent any hyperdiscretion, does it, Bola? I mean, you can't waive it for one and not for somebody else.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Okay, any other, anything else? All right. Yeah, yes, who was that?
That's me, Karen.
Yeah.
Prior to planning and development taking over this a couple of years ago, or this year, when we went to the electronic version, we did not waive fees at all. We, we didn't bring it to the board, we just stuck to the code and sent, we actually, we sent out a lot of letters because it was not electronic like it is now, where they can pay online and and finance helped planning and development when they initially got on, helping them get email addresses and that. So it's very digital now, but before it wasn't, it was very much manual and we, we sent lots of letters out and we did, we did not waive any fees. So for what it's worth, that was before they took over and Alderman Layhe is correct. I do remember that one and it was one day late and, and we did not waive the fee for him.
Okay, all right. So, Bola, you don't need any action from the board then, since they're not wanting to do anything on this?
Exactly. I think I have my direction.
Okay, great. All right, then let's go back to item 8B, which is the COVID-19 revenue and expenditure projections. I just have a few remarks first before we turn this over. I think Karen is going to, to present on this. I had asked staff to put together a presentation to review our budget to date and to make some projections going forward, given this, this pandemic. This was discussions that Bola and I have had over the last few weeks. The reason for this request is that this pandemic has caused a lot of uncertainty and unknowns and with that comes a lot of concerns. However, there are a few things that we do know. The one thing we do know is that our sales tax revenue makes up about 70% of all revenue for our city. We're not unlike a lot of other municipalities. Many municipalities in St. Louis and across the state rely heavily on sales tax revenue. We also know that because of this pandemic and the resulting order issued by County Executive Sam Page, that our revenues, in particular our sales tax revenue, is going to be below the numbers that we projected in our 2020 budget. The problem is we just don't know how low it's going to be. So the questions that I asked Bola were if, one, how much are we going to be under our revenue projections? And number two, what steps can we take to address the obvious shortfall? In order to create the revenue projections, obviously Karen and her team, with the help of outside experts, had to gather and review a lot of data. And the other part, in order to look at possible ways to reduce expenditures, the various department heads had to come up with cuts in their departments. I want to at this time thank the department heads for their acts of selflessness and making these difficult decisions for their various departments. Because of all the hard work over the last couple of weeks, we now have a really good handle on savings through various cost containment scenarios included in the slide presentation, which we're about to see. We also have some idea on the shortfall on the revenue side. I stress some idea. In order to come up with the revenue projections, certain assumptions were made. Those assumptions were that we can expect a 45% decrease in sales tax revenue for four months, a 20% decrease in sales tax for one month, and then for the remainder of the year, we'd be back on budget. Karen will explain the basis for these assumptions during the presentation, but I would stress that these are, at best, educated guesses. That's in no way intended as a slight on the work that Karen did or her team, but is simply an acknowledgement that we just don't have any real numbers now. You know, this is due to the lag in getting sales information. You all should know now, if you didn't already, that we don't, we don't get sales information for at least 30 to 45 days after the sales period closes. For instance, sales taking place in the months of November and part of December aren't reported to us until the following January. Consequently, as we sit here today, we really don't have any of the numbers covering the time that this stay-in-place order has been, has been effective. Now remember that it went into effect on March 22nd, 2020. Our solid sales numbers that we have are only through March 20th of this year. We should get the numbers covering the end of March and the first half of April next week. So how do we come up with the 45% decrease if we don't have any numbers covering the stay-in-place order? Karen and her team reviewed the main businesses remaining open and their historical sales as a percentage of total sales. Also PGAV reviewed foot traffic. Again, these, Karen will be, have an opportunity to go more in-depth on these two things. The things that I would ask this board to keep in mind as we listen to this presentation is that, number one, tonight, we are not asking the board to take any action. This is purely informational. And second, I think I've heard the word fluid used a lot over these last six weeks, but it is true. This is very fluid. This time next week, we'll have some numbers covering part of the stay-in-place order. Keep it in mind, we don't have those right now. A little more than a month from now, we should have all of April's numbers and the first part of May. Consequently, don't worry too much about the revenue projections now. They most likely will be adjusted. With that, I turn it over to Karen.
Okay, so I'm not going to go slide by slide because you all can read, other than I will just skip to slide two to let you know that obviously those are the funds where we get sales tax. And in looking at all this, we didn't look at anything other than the sales tax because, as the mayor said, we get over 70% of sales tax in all of our funds to, to, the total funds to run the city. So you see that the, basically the discussion topics and how we came up with it, the timeline. After we had the timeline, we had to get together and come up with an action plan and I won't read you what all the timelines are because you are well aware of it, other than to point out maybe on slide five that particularly on March 22nd, when we talk about excluding police and fire department for overtime, and then we also want to make sure you understand what we excluded as far as in capital, what we're going to, what we left in there. We didn't want you to think that everything in capital went away, but the things that were excluded, we tried to point that out. Make sure you knew it, knew what we have done. Slide six points out that we did the part-time layoff of 68 people for roughly $31,700 in savings. That is projected through the end of May. Again, that this is fluid, as the mayor said. We don't know what's going to happen with those people after that, but for right now, that was the projection through May when we, we started looking at this. On slide seven, it's basically to let you, try to give you an overview. It's very, a very complicated way that it's reported because it gets in there about, there are some businesses that don't have that much in sales, they can report quarterly. As I showed Bola the other day, when I ran a report off the state that was covered the month of March, there were businesses that reported in there for sales last April and another one for last August. So, and that was just the first few lines, or probably were more, but I was just making a point with Bola. So that's very complicated, but basically we report to you on the financials. So this is the month of May, we will get those roughly May 10th, May 12th. It will show up on our financials in May, but it doesn't cover the sales in May. Covers sales from a couple of months ago, four, six to eight weeks ago. With the exception of the economic development tax. That's slightly different in the beginning because as you saw, we didn't get anything on that slide in January because that tax wasn't implemented until January. They didn't start charging it till January. February, we got a little bit and it was for two businesses. One was a state business. And then in March, we got quite a bit more. That was from people starting to report and collect and more of them turning it in and reporting it. So that's why there's a little bit more of a lag there. We knew that, we were told that by the consultant, so we knew that. We weren't going to get it broken up evenly over the year. There was going to be a three to four month lag before we started collecting economic development sales. Once we pass that lag, it'll go and be reported the same way the other sales tax is reported. On slide seven tells you what is right out of the budget book. 72% of all of our, of all of our revenue for all funds is from our sales. Slide eight is again, talking about your economic development sales tax. And then we came up with an action plan. My slide had a, an emoji on there of someone like basically pulling out their hair, but Bola took it out. So slide 11 is the nuts and bolts of this, is, is the assumptions. And the very first one talks about with the panic buying a 20 to 30 cent boost of sales in mid-March from third-party sources. I didn't take that into consideration because if you hadn't figured it out, I'm pretty conservative. 45% decrease, as the mayor said, from May through August, 20% in September. And then back on budget in October through December. And then as we are looking at this for the general fund, it is strictly the local sales tax, the option tax, fire safety and the fire sales tax and the prop P money. And then only the sales tax in capital and only the sales tax in the stormwater and parks. And then those are all the resources we used. I did, Bola did, and coming up with these numbers. So on, and slide 12, that's simply the budget for those three or four sales tax in the general fund and then dividing it by the 12. And starting in, in May, you see that that number has gone down and then in September, it goes back up a little. And then we show it back on budget for a total of 903,000, almost $904,000 decrease. Is that on target? I have no idea. That was my best guess based on many, many things. First, Bola maybe can go in a little more detail. I think PGAV contacted Bola and they used the, was it Google Bola or?
GPS.
GPS. Yeah, tracking off people's phones. But as I told Andy Struckoff at PGAV, that's great, but I turned mine off because I don't want anybody tracking me. So not all people, point being, have that turned on on their phone. When he did that covering the period in foot traffic on the stores we knew that were open, and we all know what was open, he saw a 43% decrease in foot traffic when that, when the pandemic and when the shutdown started. And he predicts, he predicted that and his prediction was just through May 15th, which was what he had heard could be when Sam Page releases it. The back-to-work order or, or opening up back to county. So there's that number. Then I looked at Dan Cook, I think who's here tonight. He, he, he does work for us every month on our sales tax overall. And he provides some pretty good in-depth reports and based on those reports and looking at the top 10 businesses and how much, not even the top 10, it was within the 15, but the ones I knew that were open, there were some in there that are open that I did not include in this because I wanted to be conservative and I wanted to leave some room or so. If we get more, great, but I wanted us to not get less, but I wanted to still try to be as accurate as possible so that we can get some good numbers. And they are like 50 to 55%. So using his 43%, 47%, I said 45%. That's how I came up with that. And then the... And then the, I looked at year-to-date for two thousand and nineteen, for the entire year of two thousand and nineteen, and then January, February, and March of two thousand and twenty. Um, so, so based on those assumptions is how I came up with the forty-five percent. It's twenty percent, and the last three months is just a guess. And part of that goes to even what, uh, Andy Struckoff and I talked about. Um, it may go this way, it may not. Um, but people have been in their homes and can't get out, they got stimulus money, they can't necessarily spend it, and it's in, there's, there's a possible prediction that we think they're going to go out and spend money. But again, as I told, um, I don't remember somebody today, today's May fourth, in six days, we're going to get more figures, and I can almost guarantee you that the numbers are going to change for the May eighteenth meeting, based on the numbers we get May tenth. Um, so, these are ballpark figures. Um, general fund, it comes up with nine hundred and three thousand, capital improvement, four hundred and twenty-five, economic development, uh, one point two million. And I'll just say about that, that still covers our debt service because we capitalized the first interest, which simply means they pulled it out of the proceeds, it's sitting in the bank, we don't have to come up with that money to pay that first, uh, um, interest payment. So, we are still good on that. And then parts in stormwater was roughly four hundred and, uh, almost four hundred and seventy-three thousand, and I just totaled them all up because I don't have my spreadsheet up here, which is a total of a little over three million that we think we will not get in the year two thousand and nine, uh, twenty for sales tax. One thing that I wanted to point back out on, um, slide twelve says it's nine hundred and three thousand, and if you jump down, of loss, if you, uh, go down to, um, hang on, I gotta get there, slide, um, twenty-one, which is where our recommendations and options are. If we do nothing, which do nothing means we don't change any of the expenditures, we just allow the department to spend, but we put in the amount we think we're going to lose in the general fund, it says we would dip into fund balance for seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, and that's a difference of almost two hundred thousand. That's because in our original budget, we budgeted that we were going to put a little over two hundred thousand back into the fund balance. That's the difference. Um, so, I think, I don't know, maybe BOLA, you want to take over here to, um, get into the, like, slide seventeen and what all the cost containment's because that was specifically BOLA going to the, had to ask them, and they came back, and then she went back and asked them again, and some came up with more, um, but, but maybe you can get into that a little more, BOLA, or I can, whatever you want me to do.
I'll tell you what, why don't we do this right now, since we've, since we've gone through the revenue projections, and I think those are the ones that are possibly more problematic.
Right.
Than cost containment. Why don't we see if there are any questions on that? Alderman Plufka.
Thank you, and I want to echo, uh, Mr. Mayor, what you said. Um, I, this, this, uh, slide presentation, uh, took a tremendous amount of work, and I have nothing but respect for the work that, uh, that Karen put together here, that BOLA put together here, uh, to provide us as much information as they did. And I just want to make sure that the questions I'm going to ask, I, you know, sometimes I have a tendency to sound more pointed than I intend to be, and please don't mistake my questions for criticism, they're not. I, I just have a real question with regard to a couple of these assumptions, as the mayor asked. Um, my, my first question has to do with page fourteen, and it's the data analysis regarding the economic development sales tax. Karen, you rightly, you rightly indicated that in that first month, um, you had budgeted two hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred, six hundred and sixty-six dollars, sixty-seven cents in January, but of course, we didn't collect anything because this tax wasn't implemented until January first. Um, and I understand that, and I understand that we'll pick that up beginning in January of two thousand and twenty-one, based on, um, what's not contained at the end of this printout from, from, uh, from November and December, which will come in January of two thousand and twenty-one, and I get that. Here's my problem, though. You carry a two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollar deficit in that first month, and you don't give us a chance to make up for it in the last month of two thousand and twenty, which isn't reflected until two thousand and twenty-one. So, I would submit to you that while we have predicted three point two million dollars to be, to be received from this, um, economic development sales tax, your, your information as what you estimate we're going to receive is one point nine, uh, is actually off by two hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars, sixty-seven cents because you haven't included, um, the experience for the last month of two thousand and twenty. Um, and instead, you carry the first month of two thousand and twenty, which of course, by design couldn't, would be a deficit no matter what. So, aren't we really talking about a nine hundred thousand dollar deficit in sales tax revenue in two thousand and twenty rather than a one point two million dollar deficit?
Um, well, when you get, start talking about the stuff going into the next year, first of all, the budget was based on, not even twelve months, it was based on what, the three point two million that we got originally from, um, the consultant. And I remember asking them, probably not in an open session, but, um, I, the same concerns you had, that you just said, we're not going to collect some for the next first couple of months. Are you sure we're going to get three point two million? And they said, yes, they assured us, and that they also had built in the payments so that, uh, for what we were going to be paying for debt service to cover all that. Keep in mind that, and, and I don't want to get too much into, to the accounting and modified accrual and cash basis and that, but I've said it before, so the first two months of every year gets put back into the year before. We have sixty days by governmental accounting standards in the, the next year to take that revenue and book it back in the year before.
And I understand that, and that makes perfect sense when you're dealing with a one-year increment to a one-year increment, and you're, and even though you're not dealing with the same calendar year, you're still dealing with a year of information. What I'm suggesting is, in the first year of this tax, you're putting ourselves in a deeper hole than we're actually going to experience, at least based on prediction, because you're including a month where by the, by the design of the tax, we're not going to receive a dollar of tax. And it seems like we're, we're actually, what you're actually doing is you're actually saying we're going to have a one point two million dollar loss based on eleven months of revenue. And all I'm suggesting is that if we add that December month, uh, which won't be collected until twenty-one, twenty-one, I, I understand that.
Right, right.
Won't that give us a more accurate number that what we're going to actually receive, at least in a prediction basis, by the end of two thousand and twenty?
Possible. So, so you, you're saying instead of one point two million dollar loss, you're saying it's a nine hundred thousand dollar loss?
Nine hundred and sixty thousand dollar, uh, uh, one point two, two, five minus two sixty-six, six sixty-six.
So, a million dollars, basically.
Right.
So, and I guess my answer to you would be, uh, you're right, I think you're right, or, or could be right, let me rephrase that. But my thought is, either way, we're going to come out ahead, and, and, and in my thought when doing this was, I want to make sure we had enough money to cover the debt service for that one, one year.
I understand the motives, and you explained it very well, the motives of why you did what you did. I just wanted to be clear that as we go forward in this, understanding that it's all predictive and we're not, no one's holding anybody to any numbers because we're all sort of guessing here as to.
Right.
With educated guesses as to what we think the experience is going to be, I just wanted to point that out. Um, the second thing I wanted to ask you, and it's a, it's a logical question, and I'm sure there's a logical answer to this question, and I'm sure I'm just missing it, but if, if the economic development sales tax losses and the general fund reserve losses are coming from the same sales, how can one be predicted as eleven point nine-two percent loss and the other be predicted as a thirty-eight percent point two-nine loss?
Because the economic development tax is one tax. The general fund is four taxes, and you can't, they are not apple to apple to apple. They're not because of the pooling. It's not, and, and maybe Dan Cook can, can answer that better if he's there. BOLA?
Um, so, before I ask Dan to come speak, if you turn to the budget book and look at, um, page nineteen, which I'm sure most of you can't, but it, it has fiscal year twenty sales tax, tax rates, and this goes a little bit to what Karen was saying. In one of the earlier slides, we list all the different taxes that make up the local sales tax. So, there's the local sales tax, which is one percent, and the last time we did the calculation, the city shares thirty-five percent of that and keeps sixty-five. Then we have the local option sales tax, which is a quarter cent, uh, tax, and the city keeps eighty-five point seven percent of that. So, then you go to the capital, which is half percent, which is similar to the economic development sales tax, and the city keeps eighty-five percent. And stormwater, the city keeps a hundred percent. So, when you go to economic development sales tax, other than the one percent that the city has to pay for administrative costs, the city keeps everything else. But all these other component sales tax that we talk about in general fund, we're sharing it with others.
But if we're, so, but if we're saying that, if we're saying that we have six hundred and sixty, let's just, I'll just say it, six hundred million dollars in, in sales, um, annually, and that number's going to drop because of, uh, shelter-at-home restrictions and COVID restrictions and all of that, and we, and we predict there's going to be, instead of six hundred million dollars in sales, Brentwood's going to have four hundred million dollars in sales, or whatever the number we think is going to be annualized. Why is it that the loss borne by the economic development sales tax is so much greater than the loss borne by the general revenue, which takes, which each number takes from the same percentage of loss? I don't understand why the percentage of loss is different. I understand why the real dollars are different.
Dan Cook is going to approach the podium and, uh, take this question as well.
Okay.
How about this? Yeah, let's wait a damn thing.
It's a good question, Alderman Plufka.
It, it's a good question. I have not unfortunately seen the numbers, but conceptually, I think what, uh, what Bull is trying to say to you is that the taxes that go into the general fund, you don't get a hundred percent of those. Those are shared with other cities in the county pooling, and because of that, it is not a, uh, consistent ratio, the amount of tax that you lose from the economic development tax where you're keeping ninety-nine percent.
So, we're, since we're spreading out the loss, the same way we'd spread out a gain.
I, I think that's a fair statement.
Okay. I, I appreciate that very much. I want to commend you and BOLA both, your ability to hold your breath with the, being in outer space like that is remarkable. Um, my last, my last question is, and it's not, it may not even be a, a question because I, I think Karen, I think I heard you cover this, and, um, you had indicated in the first couple of slides that you thought anecdotally in the, in the days leading up to the pandemic shutdown, um, that there was, through anecdotal evidence, I'm assuming there's GPS evidence and other evidence, um, a predictable twenty percent increase or boost in, in sales, that's not necessarily reflected on any of these charts on pages twelve and thirteen and fourteen. And I think I, I heard you say, Karen, as you were giving your presentation, that you didn't include them as a predict, as a prediction because you wanted to keep a, um, a, a conservative line with regard to how you predict this.
Yes, yes. That's correct. And those, I think, uh, the third-party things, that, that was BOLA, right? You've got that information correct.
Right. We, we asked those who, um, were close to those, um, retailers, the grocery stores in particular, um, all the hoarding action leading up to the stay-at-home.
Right.
True benefited those stores, and we have four or five of the stores, um, that a lot of people patronize, Trader Joe's, Whole Foods, Target, Dearburg's, um, Total Wine and more. So, they definitely saw an increase, which ultimately, we will see when all those, uh, sales tax revenue numbers come in.
Very good. Thank you again. I don't have any other questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Anyone else have any questions pertaining to the, um, the revenue projections and the assumptions? Alderman Lockmueller.
Now, this is for BOLA. BOLA, do we know of any stores that won't be reopening? I know that Pier One was taken, taken out. Is there any other stores revealed that we're, we're up?
No, so, um, we, you know, we have a good partnership with PGAV, and earlier on, they, um, asked the city if we would be interested in them conducting a survey of all our businesses to determine whether any of them anticipate that they will be returning or not. So, we are in the process of collecting the response to that survey, so once we have that, we'll be sharing that with the board.
Good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Tice. Can't hear you.
Uh, I have a couple more questions on the economic development sales tax section. So, in April, it looks like we collected a hundred and ninety-six thousand. Is that, or is there, are there still businesses lagging there? I guess my concern is a hundred and ninety-five, a hundred and ninety-six thousand is not two hundred and sixty-six thousand. So, if, are there businesses lagging that are not, that haven't been pooled into that amount we got in April?
Possibly. It's possible, yes. It's, if, if they don't have to report till quarterly, yes, probably they won't report till May if they, and, and that's based on their sales. So, yes, there, there are probably several businesses, many businesses that didn't report yet.
So, we've also found out, because we have Cook and Riley, that does the monthly sales tax, uh, audit for us, we have found out that there are businesses in our town who don't report their sales tax regularly. Um, there is one particular retailer that hasn't reported their sales tax for three months. So, when we do that monthly audit and find things out like that, we have the ability to contact the Missouri Department of Revenue and ask why that is, so that they reach out to those retailers as well. There is this expectation that because they have to report it every month that they do. Um, and sometimes they just hold on to that sales tax, and when they're good and ready, they'll forward it on to the state.
But are you anticipating, are you comfortable still that if people started spending again, we would get back to the overall collection of three point two million a year?
I was told by the Missouri Department of Trans, um, Revenue last week that the city should look forward to the month of April, that their expectation is that we will begin to see what we really should be collecting, starting in the month of April. Um, so, they sent out the notices, um, to all the businesses, but then in talking to Dan Cook last week, I also found out that not every business in the state, um, obtains their tax rate from the Missouri Department of Revenue. There are third parties out there who are also in that business, and some businesses get the tax rate from them. So, what we're going to be exploring over the next several days is to make sure that these third-party businesses that offer the tax rates to the businesses have truly communicated that the city of Brentwood now has an economic development sales tax on the books.
And I, I just want to, um, repeat or, and reinforce this, that when we were doing this budget and we were given the number, I think, I think you all were in the meetings when, uh, you know, the consultants told us about generating three point two million dollars a year, that I asked to be sure, so that's where we're, that's where that budgeted number came from. Um, my concern at this point in the game was making sure we had enough to cover debt service, a, and I feel very comfortable that we're, we're okay, particularly since we capitalized the first interest payment of six or seven hundred thousand, whatever it was, and, and I, as I have said to the mayor, I, capitalizing interest to me is like mortgaging your points. You're just spreading that over into your payments so you can, you don't have to come up with the catch. But in this case, thank God, we capitalized the interest because of this pandemic, and now, you know, we're, we're doing pretty good now.
So, if I may interject, I know that we had the consultants do the, um, analysis on how much the city could generate on the economic development sales tax multiple times, different years. I think we initially did it in eighteen, then we did it in nineteen, um, and then there was historical analysis. So, historical analysis is based on what was collected over the past twenty-four months. So, all of that was factored into how we came up with this three point two million dollar number. I, I'm not concerned at all. Um, I think that, um, I think that it may be Mayor Dimmitt that actually queried Andy Struffoff a lot when he started talking about those projections. I believe those numbers are solid and I expect that we will collect it.
Thank you. I have a few more questions, if that's okay.
Yeah, sure.
So I was looking at other larger revenue sources. And one that kind of goes along with the economic development sales tax is the interest income that we would generate on investment income. So in the budget book on page 67, it looks like we anticipate revenue of 600,000 of interest income. Has that been invested? And where, do we still think that that's a big number? Because if, if, no, yeah.
I don't, but we, we have to, we just hired the, what is it?
Brad Lukens AMG Arbitrage Management Group. So they're investing, if you remember, we, the board did not make the selection or approve the selection of an investment advisor until recently. So the 40 million, 40.4 million proceeds that we had was just sitting in a money market account. And because the market has now tanked, part of the recommendation that Brad Lukens made was just to leave those investments there until we see the market settle down. After that, he'll start to invest. And hopefully, we'll be able to generate this type of interest income. If you look at what he has been able to do in the 2018 certificate of participation, he has certainly exceeded the expectation that he indicated. So over the long term is probably what we need to focus on and the ability to generate that.
It just seemed like a hole, if we're not going to hit that this year, I'm not, I mean, I assume over the long term, it just seemed like a potential hole for this particular budget year. And then another question on the assumptions that you had in the report, Karen. It said 50.2% of our tax revenues come from a short list of larger stores. Are the stores that you listed in the report?
So these are the stores that I listed. I came up with a list of stores that I know happened to be open. And then I provided that list to Dan Cook and asked him to do a historical analysis. And so the historical analysis over the past 24 months is what shows the 50.20%. Not all these stores are in the top 10, or are they in the top 50 in terms of sales tax generators for the city? I just listed all the stores that I was aware is currently open or stores, for instance, fast food places that I would drive by and see cars wrapped around the building. So it's, it's really not a reflection of our top revenue generators. It was, this was more just a list of stores that I know are open.
So this list of sources is open generates 50% of our tax revenues?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Well, that's, that's, that is really helpful information. And then I just can't believe with the news that came out today that they said on June 1st, there are going to be 3,000 deaths a day and 200,000 new cases a day. I, you know, I, I hope that your projections are right by coming back to where we were at the end, a year ago, at the end of the year. But I, I don't know, it just.
We're, we're trying to be optimistic for all of you because we feel you need that today. But I, realistically, I don't expect that to happen. If you really read all the different articles that are out there, that's under the assumption that everyone that's unemployed right now is going to get a job and they're going to be willing to spend their discretionary funds. So unless that happens, we're, we're going to probably see a greater loss, which is why we want to take a look at this every month and provide an update to the board on what the most recent sales tax report looks like.
And I'll just add on the flip side of that coin, it's possible we're not going to lose 45% over the month of the summer. Maybe it's only 35 maybe. And so that would play into the end. It would all, you know, average itself out. But to come up with hard numbers to give to people, you have to pick something and you got to live by it until you get something different. So again, I predict that May 18th meeting will probably have different numbers. We just, we just got to wait and see.
I don't have any more questions. Thank you very much. This is a lot of work went into this and thank you for presenting this to us.
Thank you, Alderwoman Tice. Anybody else have any questions for Karen or Bola or Dan on the, on the revenue projections and the assumptions that make them up? Okay, great. Well, instead of going through the, the cost containment scenarios, I guess let's try it this way, since we, you've had this. Does anybody have any questions about the cost containment that, the different funds that's being thrown out there? Again, with the idea that the whole reason for putting this together was simply to communicate to you, the board, that there are some scenarios, some plans in place that as we get further down the road in the year, if we, we get a better handle on the revenue, we have some ways to, to cut back and try to lessen this blow. So I, I think it's fairly straightforward. But if anybody has any questions about how we get, how those cost containment scenarios were created, feel free to ask them. And like Karen said, my goal is to, to visit this at, at every meeting. Have us look at these numbers. But you know, we're going into the summer months. So we're only going to be having one meeting a month, one scheduled meeting a month. So hopefully at the next meeting, 14 days from now, Karen will have some, some numbers that will absolutely cover a portion of this shutdown period. And we'll have a better handle on that. But any of that. Does anybody have any questions about the cost containment scenarios that were, that are in the slide presentation? Yeah, Alderman Leahy, I'm sorry, yes.
Question, does the city qualify for any of the government assistant grants? And were those numbers incorporated in your projections? Or is that a cushioning blow?
Right now, we would qualify for is a FEMA reimbursement for personal protective equipment.
That's the only grant. So we don't qualify for employee, employee holdings and any of that?
Employee holdings?
For keeping employees and stuff that?
No, because we didn't apply the grant.
Grant.
No, it didn't apply.
There is no governmental money that's going to flow in here that wasn't figured in either. Thank you.
Not right now. I did hear that Congress is, they're going to be looking at trying to help municipalities. Now, I'll be honest with you. There are a lot of municipalities that are worse off.
Than we are.
And I will also tell you, just based on talking to Karen and to Bola, I know it looks bad and it's, you know, it's not good, but it could be a lot worse. Like I said earlier, somebody, there's always somebody who has it, has it worse. And there are a lot of municipalities whose top producing companies are not open, that have been closed because of this, this border. Thankfully, we're not one of them. All of our producers, all of our big producers have been open and continue to, to be open. Alderman Leahy.
Following up with the MBC TIF and its potential for refinancing the bonds. But in the agreement that we're under, the city owes a TIF amount if we do not raise enough revenue in the TIF that we make up the difference. Was that differential number incorporated into your numbers?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear all the question. What, what was it about TIF?
In the, in the Meridian TIF, we agreed that we would pay a ceiling amount or the difference between revenue and that ceiling amount. Was that loss anticipated in your figures?
No. It would have been anticipated in this figure. It would be anticipated in the calculation of what we give to the Meridian.
Yep. So we may see a bigger indebtedness to them at the end of the year.
Exactly.
Thank you.
And can I just add one thing in, along the lines about the grants? You know, obviously anything can happen in Washington. So in anticipation of that, we have, with this new software we have, we have set up both in payroll and in our, in our accounting software, COVID virus, COVID project, kind of like Brentwood bound. And we can track all the expenses, what department, what it was for. And we can also track anybody that is off or is working from home or whatever type thing through this COVID process. So that if at any time someone asks us, what's COVID cost us? We can spit something out and provide the detail for it. Just in case they, they pass something where we can get grant money and they ask us that question.
Anything else, Alderman Leahy?
No, sir. Thank you.
Alderman Waggy.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I'd like to echo all the thanks. I'm putting this together and I also think everybody's doing a great job of cost containment actions being taken. Is there anything that the board should be considering or thinking about that's outside of the, the control of, you know, Ebola or otherwise that we need to, we need to seriously consider? You know, big decision type stuff that would also help alleviate some of the spending pressures?
So, you know, when you have an opportunity like this, it's, it's a chance to look at reorganization. It's a chance to maybe look at how you're providing services. There are a number of services that we have been, Dan Goomersheimer has been doing an analysis for the board. And I expect that he will be coming with a recommendation to the board in the coming days. Yeah. So we're, we're definitely looking at that. We're not talking about it tonight, but I think we might introduce it at the Public Works Committee meeting coming up.
Okay, great.
And we're not replacing your iPads this year.
Anyone else have any questions for Karen or Bola on, on cost containment in particular or the entire slide presentation in general? Okay, great. Well, we, like I said, we will be discussing this again at the, hopefully at the next meeting. And we'll see where we stand. So let's move on to the consent agenda. We have one, two, three, four, five, six items on the consent agenda. Item nine, first is standing committee reports. Item B is a warrant for 2020 operating funds expenditures. Item C is a warrant list for 2020 expenditures from the 2018 COPs. Item D is approval of meeting minutes from January 21st. Item E is approval of meeting minutes from February 3rd. And finally, item F is resolution 1213, a resolution authorizing the city of Brentwood to participate in the 2020 CARES Act. Do we have any questions about any of those items? Any desire to have any of them removed? Okay, can we get a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved. Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Ploufka, seconded by Alderman Leahy. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call please, Shelley.
Alderwoman Ebling.
You're on mute.
She's on mute.
Okay. Yes. Alderman Leahy?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmueller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neil?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ploufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
And Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you, everybody. Next on the agenda is item 10. We have no old business. Under item 11, new business, we have two items. The first is bill number 6288. Can we get a first reading by title only, please, Mr. City Attorney?
You can if I unmute. Bill number 6288, first reading ordinance of the city of Brentwood, Missouri, giving an access agreement with GWH LLC, authorizing their action, connection therewith, providing for the effective date of this ordinance and containing a severability clause.
Great, thank you. Bola?
Yes.
Who's handling this one?
Mark Murray is on the line.
Okay, Mark.
Good evening. Tonight, I think we're asking you, after discussing with Bola, to just have this for the first reading tonight. There were a couple minor changes and a revision to legal description, which needs to occur, which we should have ready for you by the May 18th meeting. Essentially, though, this is an easement to the neighboring property owner, the property immediately west of the Public Works Building on Manchester Road. They have a building that's essentially flush with the south line of the property. And they have a door to that building, which opens up onto a concrete pad, which is on the property that we condemned, formerly owned by TMD. And so essentially, what this easement does is gives them the continued right to drive up and down Lilian Avenue and to use that concrete pad to store some things with their own risk. And then to use that area behind the building to get into the rearmost building. Because again, the entrance to that rearmost building opens up onto the 2740 Bonpart Avenue, the TMD property.
Any questions for, for Mark? All right. Thank you, Mark. Next on the agenda then is bill number 6289. Can we get a first reading by title only, please, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, we're building 6289, first reading. The city of Brentwood, Missouri approving the first amendment with a contract in effect extended by authority, authorizing certain corrections to the city, providing for the effective date of this ordinance, containing a severability clause.
Great, thank you. Mark, are you, is Mark taking this one also?
Yes, he is.
Yes, this one is, this relates to the executive walks apartments there on Brentshire and Buzoo. We, under the contract we have with them, they are, we're adjusting the boundaries between the city's property and the apartment property. They're going to deed the property to us that we're getting through the boundary adjustment. And in turn, the city of Brentwood is going to give them an easement for a couple of parking spaces. The property which Brentwood owns is subject to some deed restrictions, which of all things MSD administers. And because of this, we need MSD's consent to that easement grant, which we understand MSD is willing to provide. However, they would like to see some further drawings and plans from Jacobs, which are not ready yet, but should be ready by early June. And so essentially, this amendment kicks back the deadlines under the contract to mid-June to allow MSD to review and approve those drawings and then for the parties to close late in June.
Okay. Do we have any questions for Mark on this? Alderman Leahy.
This potential easement that we didn't know about. When we talked with Norm West in Mont Mary Avenue, we asked what easements were out there. Why wasn't this known at that time?
This is not, and this is the even, you're referring to even the consent we're acquiring from MSD?
Yes, why?
That's a deed restriction on the use of the property. The deed restriction forbids the use of the property for certain things and also forbids the granting of an easement to another party by Brentwood without MSD's consent. So it's not a Norm West issue. It's an issue with MSD having to provide their consent to, to Brentwood granting an easement.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Anyone else have any questions for Mark? Okay, can we get a motion for a second read by title only?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion for a second read by title by Alderwoman Sims, second by Alderman Lockmueller. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
The motion shall carry a count of seven to one, according to my count. Okay, Mr. City Attorney, can we get a second read of bill 6289 by title only, please?
Bill number 6289, second reading and consideration for adoption. Ordinance of the city of Brentwood, Missouri, approving a first amendment to real estate contract executive limited liability company, authorizing their actions, connection therewith, providing for the effective date of this ordinance and containing a severability clause.
And a motion to perfect bill 6289 into ordinance form, please?
Don't move.
Okay, we had a motion by Alderwoman Tice, I believe, and seconded by Alderwoman O'Neil. Roll call please.
Alderwoman Ebling? Yes. Alderman Leahy?
Opposed.
Alderman Lockmueller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neil?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ploufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
And Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven yea, one nay.
Motion passes, seven yea, one nay. Bill number 6289 becomes ordinance number 4925.
Great, thank you. Next on the agenda is citizen comments. We have no citizen comments. And, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Do we need to go back to bill 6288 for a second reading?
No, I thought we're only doing a first reading tonight.
Right.
Hey, the agenda, you're right, the agenda does say second, but Mark had suggested that we just go with the first read tonight.
All right, thank you.
Sure, sure. Okay, can we get a motion to go into closed session pursuant to legal 610.021 subsection 1 and real estate statute 610.021 subsection 2?
Still moved.
And adjourn thereafter?
Yes, and adjourn thereafter. Thank you, Alderman Leahy.
Second.
Yeah, we got a motion by Alderwoman Ebling and seconded by Alderwoman Leahy. Can we get a roll call, please?
Alderwoman Ebling?
Yes.
Alderman Leahy?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmueller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neil?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Ploufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
And Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. All right. I can't remember, are we doing this? Are we, we zoom in on a different line then or?
Yes. In this column, we can join the closed session invitation.
Great, thank you. All right, we'll see everybody in a few seconds.